Good evening. It is the last day of March, March 31st, the last Wednesday of 2021. Welcome to the special meeting of the board and we're going to stand up for the pledge and then we're going to move into the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Sorry, folks. I wanted to just frame the meeting for the public and then I'm going to turn it over to Martha. The, I turned it over to you Stuart or to Martha immediately?
To Martha, please.
Okay. Thank you. So I want to frame this meeting. We, as a board, meet every other Wednesday either for legislative or business, village business meeting, the work sessions, which are less formal, but that is where presentations are done, et cetera, versus the legislative. That means that there are about three or four months in the year where there's a fifth Wednesday. Most boards usually take that off or do something else or whatever they opt to do. But we don't announce the meetings for the fifth Wednesdays the way we do the rest of them for the whole year. We decided to use this fifth Wednesday because we have the comprehensive plan, which is one of the biggest initiatives that we're going to undertake. Who knows? We might undertake bigger ones, but right now it's one of the biggest that really determines what the village might look like for the next 10 years. It's recommended, in fact, that these be done, that these comprehensive plans be done every 10 years. We are using this special meeting for two purposes tonight. One is to have, to open a public hearing for the comprehensive plan, which is a multi-year effect. The, and we will decide how long to keep the public hearing open. The second one is about spaces for cafes. It has to do with outdoor cafes. And we decided to use this Wednesday to open a public hearing about that because that one has the time of the essence issue in that spring is here and we need to make some decisions about outdoor cafes as we move in and out of COVID, out of the pandemic. So that's what we're here to do tonight. This is not a regular meeting where we're going to have a whole bunch of other things. These are the two key issues. And I just want to explain to the public what a public hearing is. It literally is a public hearing. It's not a town hall meeting. It's not questions and answers and conversations. It is an opportunity for the Board of Trustees, specifically the Board of Trustees, to hear comments, ideas and suggestions from the members of the public, which means that when we go through the process, we will be listening for the public. Sometimes people come in and ask us questions. They would like to debate an issue. That's not what a public hearing is. It is really a hearing session. Sometimes somebody on the board might have some additional questions for the person speaking, et cetera, et cetera. Maybe there's some legal advice. We turn to our attorney. So I just want to frame that because people do have some various expectations when they hear it, when they hear this is a public hearing. And then we're going to have the consultants that have been working the comprehensive plan go through the timeline of the comprehensive plan and then we will have the village manager and Stuart Cahan also goes to the second piece, which is the cafes and where we're going with that. I hope that at least frames it for folks. I think that we're going to start with the first one, which is a comprehensive plan. I'm going to turn it over to you, Martha.
Okay, so we're going to start with the attendance first. Trustee Fritchie?
Thank you.
Trustee Fritchie?
I'm present. I was trying to hit that on mute.
Okay. Trustee White?
Present.
Trustee Lopez?
Here.
Trustee Casada?
Present.
Mayor Levin?
Here.
Okay. We are opening the public hearing in the matter of the proposed comprehensive plan and zoning tax amendments. Would you like, is anybody here from the public who would like to make any comments?
Mayor, do you want the brief presentation to be first?
That's what I thought I just said.
Okay, I apologize.
That we're doing the presentation first.
I apologize.
No problem.
No problem.
And Mayor, should we leave the first slide here coming up to you?
Yeah, let me, I have to turn my, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. So I think on this slide, thank you again to the staff for putting this together. I think we went through the purpose, which is to think first about what the public would like to say tonight about the comprehensive plan. Again, which has been on the website for quite a while now. This is the point where the public may comment. Raise your hand either to the Zoom functions or put your questions into the Q and A. Dana, if I could ask you to look at the Q and A part, and so as people do the Q and A, bring that to the forefront so we don't miss out on those folks. Is that okay?
Yes, thank.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Please do limit your comments to four minutes. This is about the framing. This is generally the process we follow. We generally want to hear from one person and then go through the list of people that want to speak. So, and we will only go back to a person that's already spoken if we have the time. So please sort of think through your comments and put them all together. Once everybody's gone through, we may be able to get back to you. That's the format that we normally go through. And am I to understand, Maddie, that you will be the timekeeper for the four minutes if we have the need for that?
Indeed, yes, it's me.
Okay, so you will get a warning on Zoom and you'll be told, you know, to please wrap it up, the four minutes or believe me, four minutes is a good amount of time. Don't get nervous about that. But we also appreciate it when people speak, if they tell us their relationship to Austin. If you're a village resident, a town resident, you might be a business owner in the village, et cetera, et cetera. We would appreciate your name stated clearly for the record and your relationship to the community. You can also submit things, everything you need in writing. As always, you can contact the board directly, which is bot@villageofosning.org. If you want to submit information directly regarding this plan and would like to do it directly to plan@villageofosning.org. That is also one of the venues to use. So everything is on the website, is listed here and you could see where we are on the website for you to look at the plan. I can't move the slides, so Maddie, you need to do that.
Mayor, should I pick up here from you?
Yep, you're starting from here.
Great, okay. My name's Frank Fish. I'm with BFG Planning. I'm going to go through the highlights of the comprehensive plan and then I'll turn it to Simon Kates to go through the zoning. What we hope to do this evening, you can see very briefly here, is just a brief presentation on the planning process. What's entailed in the comprehensive plan and then the zoning code update. And that's what we're asking for a public comment on at the public hearing that the mayor already covered. So this, the zoning code, there's three things in it which Simon will go over. The creation of a form-based zone downtown, two modifications to the T District and a modification to the S 75 District. So those, that's what the hearing is about tonight. And then the timeline, and this, the end of March is sort of a one-year anniversary for us. You can see on this timeline up in the far left, a blue, 331, March 31, we had our first committee meeting last year. And those meetings have carried through till January 28th of this year, when the committee sent a draft plan to the trustees and the, that's what this, this public hearing is about again, both the comprehensive plan and in pink here on the slide is the zoning code revisions, which the trustees have worked on. In yellow on this, also there's an accompanying, accompanying generic environmental impact statement that's been done. And things you see at the bottom in orange are just on public participation, which was a critical part of this whole plan. And there's a few slides on this that I'll go through later. But where we are, you can see, we're here, March 31, 2021, for the public hearing. After the hearing, there'll be several meetings with the trustees to review comments made and the trustees will decide how the plan gets revised. And then hopefully they'll be in a position, perhaps in May, this will be up to the trustees. They'll be able to make their findings under the State Environmental Quad Review Act and then they could adopt the plan or the plan with revisions as, as they wish. So the next slide really just goes in to the beginnings of this and I'll, I'll be brief on this, but I think it's important to go through. There's a prior 2009 comprehensive plan. And this plan is really an update of that plan. So this is not a plan out of the blue. It relies on a whole set of past studies that you can see here. I'm not going to read all of those, but one of the most important for us was that 2009 comprehensive plan. And there are several other studies. One of them that's important is in the middle here, the Pace Land Use Law Center did a whole public participation plan. And I think the village tried to, and I think we, I hope we, the village succeeded in carrying out the strategies of that public participation plan, which we'll go into in a minute. And then finally, the village, as you can see here, had a request for proposals, listed in that request for proposals, what it wanted in this plan. Then I just wanted to, we just wanted to compare for you the 2009 plan briefly with this Austining Tomorrow 2021 plan. As you can see, we've, we followed the comprehensive plan organization from 2009. However, trustees were also interested in zoning. The 2009 plan really didn't have a chapter on land use and zoning. So we created that and that's chapter three in this plan. And then also the 2009 plan, it didn't seem to us to have a future land use. So it's sort of a a concluding chapter, if you will. So our concluding chapter has in it chapter 10, a future land use plan and then an action agenda of things to, specific things that the trustees would be able to, and other agencies, the village, implement over a number of years. I'm just going to cover here, which I think was a critical element to the village, that there be a, as widespread a of public outreach as, as we could get. The steering committee process went through monthly meetings, which we showed earlier. And in addition to that, the committee itself held a series of study halls. So they reviewed chapters as they were done. They provided comments back to us. And then they voted basically in, on January 28th, as I mentioned, to send the, the overall draft to the, to the trustees. Then the next slide just goes through the process used. There were subcommittees that were set up. You can see the six subcommittees listed here in terms of economic development through community services. Those subcommittees had about 63 members on them in addition to our major committee. And then during this process, we went through 11 meetings that you can see listed here with the village board of trustees. We'll go through several others now after the public hearing. We did two, which I particularly appreciated because a lot of this has been done by Zoom. And we did two walking tours, one downtown and one of the waterfront in person, spatially distanced with masks. And I thought those were very, very helpful to us. Many trustees and committee members attended both tours. And then we had a virtual sort of village hall meeting and then this committee held its own public hearing. You can see there on October 20th. And then we have this public hearing by the trustees tonight. And then very briefly, during this process, we, we posted online sort of an ideas wall where people could comment directly. We did a public survey through something called Survey Monkey. That was very helpful to us. As you can see, the responses there, the 455 responses. And then there was also an interactive map where people could actually suggest things using, using a map. And then overall, the public website, we think, you know, it listed here over 2,000 visitors. And then there were social media updates and regular posts to Facebook throughout the process. So that was sort of the extensive public outreach process. Here's some key issues addressed in the, in the comprehensive plan. You can see emphasize strategies to improve the lives of Austining residents. Overall, this, this plan tries to get at that. It's one of the major focus of the plan. However, boost economic development, expand the tax base is, is also in the plan and runs through particularly, for instance, the economic development chapter of the plan. And then incorporate principles of environmental sustainability. It's, it's running through many chapters of the plan, like the waterfront and the sustainable infrastructure chapter. And then also there's housing chapter and other chapters also to identify strategies to preserve Austining's neighborhoods. So those are four sort of overarching themes, if, if you look at it that way. There's also in the plan, a future land use map. I want to just mention that the colors here that you see, the yellows are sort of the lighter the yellow. It's a single family or low density. And as the yellow gets darker, it's, it's two-family or three-family and then into multifamily. And then the downtown, which is mixed use. The sort of pinks are more the commercial properties, blues are institutional. And there is a new designation on this future land use plan for the waterfront west of the tracks. And that's a conservation, a resiliency zoning designate, not zoning, sorry, a land use designation. But it indicates that it was the thought of, of the committee and the trustees to try our best to adjust to climate change, sea level rise and flooding in that area west of, of the tracks. So I want to emphasize here that the, the future land use plan does not have in it any major map changes or zoning changes. In that sense, it reinforces what exists. It does have that change on the waterfront to try to respond to climate change. And downtown, it tries to reinforce downtown with a form-based code intended to sort of preserve the old character of downtown with the form, if you will, or the heightened sort of character of downtown. We also recommend that this plan be updated every 10 years. State law is silent on that, but we, we found in our experience in other places that 10 years is, is a very good target to use. And also there's a recommendation that the comprehensive plan steering committee might remain in place so that it, it could report to the trustees perhaps each year and how, how are you doing on, on the action plan at the end of this, at the end of the comprehensive plan? So there's then, I'm going to turn this to Simon to go into the relationship between the comprehensive plan and the zoning and Simon's going to do the zoning code summary itself. So Simon, take it away.
Thank you, Frank. Simon Kates from, from BFG Planning. To conclude here, I wanted to talk a little bit about the relationship between the plan and the zoning. The comprehensive plan, you know, in a way, it sets the stage for future actions by the village, by the board of trustees. Zoning and also other recommended actions. But zoning is really one of the primary legislative tools that, that the village can use in order, in order to implement the comprehensive plan. Now, it's important to understand that the, the plan has a range of different recommended zoning changes. And the trustees are also considering in parallel three specific zoning changes that are, that are recommended by the plan right now, right? So the, the plan has other changes that are, that are recommended. But there are only three that the board is considering, you know, sort of as a part of this public hearing and, and to be adopted in, in the next few months. And, and they're listed here in the middle of the slide. I'm going to talk about them in a little bit more detail on, on the next couple of slides. At the bottom here, the, the sort of third item in purple is, is just to highlight and reinforce that the other zoning changes that are in the plan. If the, this board or, or a future Board of Trustees were to act on them, they would be subject to their own approvals process, even though they're recommended by this plan. The, the board is not required or mandated to take action on any of those changes, but they're also not precluded from it. And so it's, we think it's just an important nuance to highlight here that there, there are these three changes that are being considered now to the zoning code. There are other zoning changes recommended by the plan. It would require a future action. And there's no requirement that the board take that action, but, but, but this board or future board could in the future explore some of those other zoning changes. And so just to go through the three that are recommended here. The first one is creation of a form-based overlay district for the downtown and for Croton Avenue. The objective of, of creating a form-based overlay is, is really to ensure that new development in these areas in the downtown and along Croton Avenue are in keeping with the historic character of, of the village that people, that, you know, the folks in the village liked about the downtown. Ensure that new development helps to benefit walkability and pedestrian access in the village. You can see here on the map where these are proposed. The, the downtown overlay district generally matches the, the village center district, the VC district that covers your downtown. And the Croton Avenue overlay, the CA overlay district generally matches the, the neighborhood center two district that's on Croton Avenue. And just one more slide on the overlay here and I've got some text missing. So I'm going to just stay with me here for a moment. Just go out of the full screen so you can all see the text. So the, the form-based overlay district is, is called an opt-in. It's not required. It doesn't replace the existing underlying zoning. So what you see on the left side of the screen here outlined in green is, is the existing zoning in those two areas, the village center and the neighborhood center two. And, and what's proposed is heat on the right. Now, a developer who is seeking to, to build in, in one of these two areas would have the option to stay with the existing zoning, the VC or the NC two, or to choose to opt into these overlay districts. And what that would mean is they would be required to comply with form-based standards that would ensure, as I said before, that, that this new development would reinforce the historic character of these parts of the village. They would also contribute to a community benefits fund, which, which could be set by the trustees. And in exchange, they would be incentivized to do this by, by what you see here on the right of the slide. In the downtown overlay district, they would get an extra one story of height. And residential uses would become permitted instead of a conditional use. And in the, in the Croton Avenue overlay district, residential similarly becomes a permitted use and also residential is a lot, is a lot on the ground floor. So that's the, those are sort of the incentives that would encourage someone to participate in in the overlay, the opt-in overlay district. Then just to close here, before I turn it back to the mayor, there are two other districts that have proposed changes. One is the T District. T in T District stands for two families. So the one change here is to allow two family units as principal permitted uses instead of as conditional uses in the T District. And the other change is to reduce the required side yard setback from 12 feet in a combination between both sides of 28 feet down to eight feet and 20 feet. The purpose of the second one is in a recognition that a lot of the lots in, in the two-family or T District are very narrow and reducing the side yard would make it easier for an owner of an existing building to do renovations or if there is a vacant lot for infill development, it makes, makes it a little bit easier to comply with these side yard setbacks. Then the modifications to the S 75 district down at the bottom, it's just that same reduction in side yard setbacks from 12 feet on one side and 28 combined, the eight feet on one side and 20 feet combined. And that's responding to the same issue in the S 75 that you have in, in the T District, which is that a lot of these existing lots are very narrow and these, these reduced side yard setbacks make it easier for someone to make a renovation on an existing building. Or again, to, to, to build a new, a new structure in a vacant infill lot. So that is the, the quick summary of the plan as Frank covered and the, the zoning changes here. And I'm going to turn it back to the mayor to, to take us into the public hearing portion of the evening.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Yeah, maybe if I unmuted, that would be helpful. I know there are a couple of questions in the Q and A. We will get to those shortly. So I'm going to set the stage again for what a public hearing is, which is that we are here for opinions, suggestions, recommendations from members of the public. But this is not a Q and A. It's not a town hall. I already see. Welcome, Mr. Smith and Jason. So questions about how things are done or why they were done would most likely be more appropriate in an email to the bot@botvillageofosning.org or to the planet villageofosning.org. If you need answers, questions, clarity on what the consultants may have worked on, what the steering committee did, different chapters of the plan. This is a hearing session to hear the public. So comments like, I disagree with this part or this chapter. I like the idea of doing this and that. I'm opposed to the point of view of doing this other thing. That's what the hearing sessions are usually about, generally speaking. So just wanted to frame that for folks because I'm already seeing the Q and As. Please limit it to four minutes. So this assumes that you have looked at, at parts of the plan, all of the plan, a specific section of it. And you want to bring to the attention of the board, something that you feel the board may not have heard about and that you want to make sure that it hears about from you as member of the public. You can, and any of the questions in forms of clarity, I really do suggest that you send them in writing and we will get the right people on staff or on the board to get your questions answered. Plan@villageofosning.org is listed here again. If you prefer to send it directly to bot, just send it to us. And I think that's it for me unless you're moving to another slide.
No, this is the last slide. Would you like me to stop sharing so folks can see the?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, I see we have one hand raised, Willing Biddle. I'm going to allow you to speak if you wouldn't mind sharing with us your name and your relationship to the village. And I will begin the timer at that point. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you can. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. So, so my name's Willing Biddle. Wing is everybody calls me. Our company owns the Arcadian Shopping Center and the, what's known as the Lou Burger Building, 22 Rockledge behind it. So that's my connection with the town. I want to compliment the town and Frank's firm for doing a very thorough job on this master plan. I had a few comments that I wanted to mention. So as I mentioned, our, our company has owned the Arcadian Center and the Lou Burger Building for over 20 years. We've made a considerable investment in it over the years. We built the new Stop and Shop. You all are pretty familiar with what's happened at that center over the years. I don't, I don't need to go through it, but we've put a lot of money into it. We take great pride in it. It's really the southern gateway to Austining. It's the largest commercial property in Austining. And it's the only property which is in the PC zone in Austining. And it's the only property which is in the PC zone in Austin. I believe the property is one of the largest contributors, if not the largest contributors to the town's tax revenue base. And it's, at the same time, it's probably the property that is most threatened by Amazon. The COVID pandemic and the increasing real estate tax burden. The plan states that Amazon has had an effect on Main Street. Retail, but for some reason does not mention the effect on the largest commercial property in town. Compared to our other properties in the region, and we own about 60 shopping centers. I wanted to let you know that the taxes on the Arcadian Shopping Center. Have grown at a significantly higher rate than the rest of our portfolio. So I think a major goal of the master plan. Should be to reduce taxes in town to remain competitive with other towns. I did not really see that as a goal. As a farmer says, and I kind of grew up on a farm. You can't, you can't just milk a cow dry. It will stop producing milk. So you've got to keep that in mind and you got to stay competitive because tenants come to Arcadian, they look at other towns and. They look at the total rent and it's difficult if taxes are rising. So as some of, as you may be aware, but maybe not, the property is is got some serious issues right now. Marshall Shoes has moved out. Stop and Shop will be downsizing the store. Because the size of the store doesn't seem to support the size of it. We're going to be putting a warehouse in part of it. WCC in the back, the college. Hasn't paid rent this year, and the only reason they're there is because they are not being forced to pay rent. The gym is basically out of business right now and is only there because we're not evicting them. So I just, I wanted to point out that the property is in. Very risky precarious situation right now with what's going on. So I think that the the comprehensive plan should consider what can be done. To enable our property to remain relevant and vibrant in the community. So I have some suggestions on how you can do that. I think it should be a top priority of the village to push hard to analyze its village-owned properties. And sell the underutilized properties so they can contribute to the tax base and therefore reduce taxes. As the internet and other forces decreases the demand for brick and mortar retail. The lower demand for space could be offset by permitting multifamily market rate housing in the PC zone.
Mr. Biddle, I'm sorry, your four minutes is up.
Well, I have. I have probably. Eight more minutes that I'd like to share with you, and I've worked hard on this, and I think it's important to trustees.
I do appreciate that, but everybody gets the same amount of time. There are 40 people on. There are two things that you can do. You can, in the four minutes, by the way, as stated. In every one of these meetings, you could submit it in writing to the Board of Trustees. I do also want to, just for the public record, this is the Village of Austin meeting, not the Town of Austin, separate municipality. Always very confusing, and I, it's oftentimes interchanged, no big deal. I'm familiar, we're all familiar with the property you're speaking about. Just wanted to correct it for the public record, that's all. But everybody gets the same four minutes regardless. Of the size and scope of the conversation piece. So you can submit it to us in writing if you'd like. If you have eight more minutes.
I'll be, I'm going to be on this meeting all night. Maybe at the end of the night, you'll have time to listen to me.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, next I have John Vanstein. Mr. Vanstein, if you could state your name and relationship to the village. I will begin the timer once you've done that.
John, are you with us?
John, please make sure you unmute your microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so Deborah Vanstein is 78 South Highland Avenue. I do, thank you. I have, I have not been following this closely, I have, I have to admit. I just wanted to share a couple of insights and a little history with you. The Village of Austin since urban renewal has been the poster child of the thing not to do to your town. When the highest-rise buildings went up in Sparta and on Route 9, we were on the front page. As the worst thing you could do to your community with that headline, do not do this to your town. Since then, after that, we had the condo boom, both in the town and in the village, and a moratorium that had to be put on that because it was out of control. I know that you want to increase your tax base and encourage certain development. But I feel that a village. And its financial well-being is kind of like a skyscraper. Once you get over so many floors. It's no longer economically the most efficient. It's for show. And when you start trying to push development that is beyond your infrastructure. All you do is hurt your community and cost your taxpayers money because in the end you can't sustain it. We're already there. We're already seeing that. Our schools are out of control. We have a number of things. Our water system is needed to be improved. Over the last decade or so have been. Really important considerations and not taken into account. And the other thing I want to point out with downtown is. You want to increase the height of the buildings there. First of all, that's going to ruin the historic character. Secondly. If you look around you, the other downtowns that are successful, they don't have tall buildings. People like to go to places that are warm and inviting to people. And once you get to a certain height and a certain relationship to the street, you lose that. And once it's built, you can't get it back. The other thing is, I want to say that the area that I live in. Below, from Squire House down to the park. Is zone commercial. It doesn't recognize that it's primarily residential. And when it comes to different things that happen in that area of town, like what DOT does and other things. That really matters, and it hurts the property owners that are here along Highland Avenue. So we might want to consider that. We might have want to consider some beautification, putting the trees back along, making it a promenade that it was back in the day. Make it something welcoming that people really want to come to. So on that note, oh, the other thing, no parking in front of buildings, okay? I don't want to see cars. I want to see attractive architecture. If the property is big enough to handle the vehicles, you can put them behind the building, screen and green, okay? That is it, regardless. And I talked with, I talked with the planner, the head of the planning. That Austin used back in the day that caused a lot of this hoopla, and his response to me was, well, you know, it was what the trend was at the time. But just because something is the trend, everybody's doing it, doesn't mean you need to do it or that you even want to do it. So on that note, good luck, guys.
No, we appreciate that. Thank you for your input. If I could take a minute, please, there are Q and As in here. Mr. Smith. Dana, do you want me to read it or you?
Jeff Smith had asked, are there any changes to current zoning proposed? Or planned in addition to the T modifications and S 75 modifications? Later, he said that he would send this question in an email.
Great, thank you, because again, not a Q and A, a hearing session. Next one. Thank you, Jeff.
Jason quotes the plan, identify strategies to preserve Austin's neighborhoods. He asks, how are neighborhoods defined? What metrics were used to identify qualities? Residents value to be preserved in their neighborhood?
If I could, if I could ask. The consultants or staff to take that note down or take a picture of that in the back to him or post it. That'd be helpful because that's a straight on clarification questions unless, Jason, you would like to raise your hand and actually.
I do think that we can take the chat down, but I think we can copy the chat. It will be hard to follow up with people though, because if we only have a person and we don't have an email attached to it.
I'm sorry.
Well, we can't respond to them because we don't know who they are in the question. So if something, this is a question and they want to answer that, they should add their email to it.
Right, so for the folks that want to give us their comments and suggestions, please raise your hand. If you have an information question, as some of these are. As Henry Martinez just said, we'd appreciate an email with your questions. Points of clarification that you need, information about how different things were done, very much appreciated. Your suggestion, though, to take down the Q and A, I think is reasonable, because if we're not able to really answer Q and A or. This doesn't make sense in this format, then we might just want to keep reminding people to raise their hands and give us their point of view, as was just done. Maddie, do you see any other hands up?
Yep, we have Robert Stava. Robert, I am going to allow you to talk. Please give your name and your relationship to Austin, and I will begin the timer once you've done that. Thank you.
My name is Robert Stav. I live at Tulenden Avenue here in the Village of Austin, and I'm a resident, obviously. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, so my question is. You know, I guess we fall in the neighborhood that they're talking about loosening the multifamily restrictions and. Given the almost, I would say ridiculous amount of illegal housing going on Linden Avenue here, all up and down the block. And down in Ellis Place. I'm not sure how opening up the restrictions on multifamily housing even further is going to improve. The quality of life for the residents here.
Mr. Stava, I, I, I prefer that you phrase it as an opinion, which it sounds to me, but I don't want to put words in your mouth, that you don't believe that these changes. Would actually improve quality of life. Otherwise, you're sort of asking us a question.
Yeah.
And again, not a Q and A, you're allowed free to email us. It's a hearing. So is it your point of view that you want to share with the board? That this will or will not, the way you read it, improve? The situation?
Correct, yeah. I think it's opening up sort of a Pandora's box on a situation that is not even being enforced right now as far as the zoning laws are not enforced. Down the village. I can, I call in consistently, I've been doing it for 10 years, so my concern is that, yeah. Expanding those those restrictions or loosening them, I should say, in multifamily housing is going to degrade the level of quality of life and for our housing values here in the neighborhood.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Again, you can understand why the purpose here is for us to hear what the public's saying. I did not mean to put words in your mouth. Just wanted to be clear about that.
Yes, got it.
Okay, well, we appreciate your input, sir.
Yeah.
We have a comment in the Q and A. It's a comment, it's not a question.
Good.
From an anonymous attendee who says, as a resident, I am concerned about my property taxes as a homeowner rising. In reflection of the lower commercial residency. I do not want to see T-zone taxes raised, nor do I want or appreciate the thought of extending multifamily use here.
I see. Okay, that's a good use of the Q and A, because while we don't know who said it, somebody on the call. That's helpful. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, I see. Oh, I saw another hand raised. It has since disappeared. The three speakers who already spoke still have their hands raised. I do not see any new hands.
I'm going to wait a minute or so. I'm also going to. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, mayor, we got two more.
Okay.
So I will bring in Galaxy S6. Please give us your name and relationship to the village. Thank you. And Galaxy X6, please unmute yourself.
Hi, it's Joyce Calata. I am concerned about the setbacks. And what they, you talked about four feet, but when I watched the planning board meeting today. They talked about wanting to lower it to two feet. So does that mean that like driveways and houses are going to add on and just have two feet? Between them is, I was unclear about that. I know this is a question, but I would hate to see two feet setbacks.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna let somebody else explain because I consider this a point of clarification. Because I think. It would be difficult for you to read the plan and understand it if you don't understand what this reference is. And that would be on there. No, so I'm going to have somebody actually explain what they mean by two feet and what that footage actually refers to.
I actually watched the planning board meeting today, and the comprehensive plan says the setbacks are four feet. Planning board meeting today, they discussed dropping it down to two feet. In case people want to put a driveway in, which I understand has to be six feet. And then it would only, if you dropped it down to two, then you could put driveways everywhere, and I would definitely not want to see that.
Mayor, 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 may I sort of maybe Hymen can clarify this, but.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joyce. And it actually is the, what you're referring to right now is our current code has the four feet setback. From your lot line to the, to the beginning of the driveway, let's say. And then you have a driveway. Right now, what the proposed law or part of the comparison plan is. Instead of having four feet buffer, I'm going to call it a buffer zone. Between your driveway and your lot line, that we want to reduce that to two feet. It has nothing to do with the building. It has, the setbacks itself has nothing to do with the main structural you build it. It only has to do with where your driveway itself.
Trustee, because I apologize for interrupting. I just want to correct something. That two-foot change you mentioned is not in the zone.
Correct, yes, correct.
I want it to be clear.
I understand that.
Yeah, so I, so part of the process here is that the Board of Trustees is required to refer the plan for comment to the planning board. So the plan.
Yes, I watched that today.
Yeah, so they're providing comments to the, to the Board of Trustees, but the Board of Trustees ultimately will make the decision. About whether or not to integrate those comments. If they think they're good or if they do not think they're good. Ultimately, that's their choice. The plan that they have in front of them does have the side yards at four feet, I believe. And the, what the planning board would like to consider is that it be reduced to two feet. And I think what you're saying is that you would like it to not be reduced to two feet, but instead to stay at four feet, correct?
Yes, correct.
Right.
Right, so when, when people talk about public engagement, so. The planning board and zoning boards are also. Open to the public in the sense that you can watch as you did. You're also free to write your opinions to them. People always ask me. You know, how do I get my opinion across to to the people that make the decisions? Well. In your case, you are free to also contact them, say, you know, I watched, I watched your meeting. I don't agree with you, and I don't agree for the following reason. You could send exactly that same email to the Board of Trustees to reiterate what you're saying tonight, which, thank you, Hymen, thank you, Stuart, and thank you, Manny. Because this is exactly what hearing sessions are for. You are opposed to that idea because you don't want more. You think that that will create more parking, more driveways, etc. That is probably what some people do want, but you're opposed to that. And so, so note it and feel free to put it in writing. This is being recorded, but feel free to make sure that we get that message.
I'm just thinking about aesthetics. In neighborhoods.
Understood. And again, I try not to put words in people's mouths. I just want to make sure that we're hearing you clearly is what I'm doing here. That's all.
You did.
Great, and thank you for watching the planning. Because, you know, this is the kind of involvement we, we hope to have more of, so I appreciate that. Is there anything else? I don't think you ran out of your four minutes. Is there anything else? That was your main point that you would like to bring to our attention?
No, thanks. That's it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Thank you, Ms. Calata. There sure is. Next up, we have Eric Garrity. Mr. Garrity, I am going to bring you over. Please give us your relationship to Austin, and then we can begin.
Eric Garrity, co-owner of Sing Sing Gil Brewery and resident of the Village of Austin. Is this the right time? Is this the right time to speak about Local Law III?
Actually, I didn't differentiate that we're doing one and doing the other. Technically, it's both of them are up at the plate. I'm just gonna ask Stuart, is there any issue with discussing both?
This is just the public hearing. The discussion on the resolutions comes after the public hearing.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna have to wait on that. Mr. Garrity, do you want me to text you when we're up to that section? So you don't have to wait for the whole time?
Sure.
All right, if, just text me. Do you have my number, serious there? I don't want you sitting here for a long time, if you don't have to. My number is 420-7941. Just text me, so I have your, your number. I have the correct one, and I'll actually text you when we get to that point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garrity. Next up, we have Baumwell. Baumwell, if you could give your full name and relationship to Austin, please.
Hi, this is Mike Baumwell. My wife and I were at Six Prospect Place. We moved here within the past year. And just sort of, just getting into the whole village government planning and background. So my only concern is with the T district proposal. I already see that there's a lack of parking in this area where we live. And I'm concerned that any kind of relaxation of the current zoning would encourage more of a congestion in that parking room. That's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you like to take one more hand, Mayor?
I do, and then we can, yes, please.
Okay, I have Mary Mitchell. Mary, if you could give your relationship to the village, please.
Good evening. My name is Mary Mitchell, and I also live on Prospect Place. You know, similarly to a few points that have been made this evening, I agree that opening up the restriction on the multifamily housing more in the T-zone will significantly impact our ability to park at our houses, right? We've already identified that the housing is not well-suited for adding parking on-site, right? Because of the spacing of houses, particularly in this district. And with our parking already being, I'll call it at full capacity, right? I, I am very concerned that increasing the number of folks living in the district significantly will make it almost impossible for us to park at our own houses.
Thank you. I hope I didn't cut you off. What was that? Were you done? Great, well, I appreciate, I appreciate your input and your attendance. Thank you. Can we go to a couple of Q and As, Dana?
Yeah, we have a, Jason has a comment. "Loosening zoning laws seems to avoid the negative consequences regarding accountability of enforcement. It's difficult for a homeowner and taxpayer to see the benefit of that approach. The historical integrity of the architecture and layout of the village will be forever altered. That is a negative impact that will be everlasting, especially for a community that claims to value history."
Okay, thank you. I think you had another one, too, Dana.
Allowing, he also says, "Allowing residential use on the first floor of a mixed-use building does not promote business at all. From a customer's point of view, it's akin to walking into a house."
Okay, thank you. I have to say that that, it's an interesting idea that was brought forth that I haven't seen before, so I appreciate comments that people might have about that idea. When I say brought forth, I mean here in Austin, I'm not saying in other communities. So I do appreciate for people that might be listening, not everybody has comments, not everybody wants to comment. But I would personally really like to get feedback on that concept, because for me, that's a new concept for us. Anybody else? Do we have more? I'm trying to follow the Q and As, because sometimes it's sort of, we can put them together.
That's pretty much it for the Q and A. They've been either addressed or or are put off for email, unless you want to...
Okay. Okay, any other hands, Maddie? Because I'm flipping through here, trying to find them.
No, there are no new hands. Just two folks who had spoken already. Willing Biddle and Mary Mitchell still have their hands raised.
Okay, it's about 8:25. The format's usually to let everybody speak once, although we don't have tons of hands going up, and then for the trustees to comment. So we've got three hands? Or two?
Now we have Willing Biddle and Deborah Vanstein, both who have already spoken.
Okay, and I think that Deputy Mayor Casada also wants to comment on the comprehensive plan. But Manny, you would do that at the end, when the board has time to comment as well. I know you're not raising your hand. I just know that you do have some comments. Can we, since we do not have a whole bunch, and we're not going through the Q and As. Stuart, unless you tell me that it's inappropriate to take it, I'd like to at least give people a chance, because we're not running that late.
No issue, no issue at all, Mayor. Please go ahead.
Okay.
Mayor, also, there are three more comments in, in the Q and A, three new comments.
Okay.
I'm sorry, John Vanstein had a question. He's also got his hand raised, so he could just say...
Yeah, why don't we just bring, I think it's her, not John, but...
Oh, Deborah.
Yeah.
Hi, Deborah.
Okay, Deborah, you are in.
Okay, there we are. Yeah, no, actually, Rika, I just, I want a clarification, because when you said that that was an interesting concept, and you'd like to know more about it, I didn't know what that represented.
I'm sorry. It's that first floor that Jason was referring to. There is a comment about that. I'm not being, I'm not judging or giving my opinion. I would like the public to think about that and, and give us their opinion about that.
It's actually a really important planning issue for Main Street. And there should never be residential on the first floor. It should be some kind of business on the first floor. And preferably with something that is attractive to those walking on the street, on the sidewalk, and has some light in the evening. So if someone were to dine and decide to go for a walk, they would see attractive store windows, et cetera, that would be of interest and may be a calling card for them to return at another time, so they could participate in those businesses. We do have a few too many medical businesses on Main Street, but that was who was paying rent. So the thing with the zoning making it not a special situation, but as a right to have residential above the first floor commercial on Main Street is absolutely a wonderful idea, and it's been recommended for decades.
Got it.
If I, if I could just make one point of clarification, just so that it's understood. There's a regulating plan for the form-based zone that talks about where residential on the first floor could be permitted, and Main Street entirely is not called, there's no change that calls for residential to be permitted on Main Street at all. There are other parts of what is the existing DC District and the proposed form-based overlay district, where it does permit residential on the first floor. Main Street is not on it, so I did want to clarify that.
Okay, because it looked like it was on it before, with the overlay that, with the overlay from Main Street and adding to the square footage. No?
Mayor, I apologize. We don't want to start getting into the back and forth here.
Okay, yeah, I know. So, thank you, Hymen, but we're not gonna get into back and forth. I would say, though, if you could put in the chat, if there are page numbers or a chapter that Ms. Vanstein could look at, that might be helpful to her. Can we get the next question, please, Maddie? The next comment, excuse me.
We have, Marissa Caruso has a comment.
Sorry.
"Plan should include a parallel initiative to address unsafe substandard housing. It would be irresponsible to increase density and expect this longstanding issue to self-resolve. This approach needs better balance. It's top-heavy on housing." ...her phone the whole night. Does she realize people can see her?
Is your speaker on?
Who's talking? Somebody should be muting.
They just muted it. They just got off.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. That was a comment and input about that. I appreciate that. Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else? Gonna stall for one more minute and do my tap dance, just in case somebody's having technical issues or can't get to us, or whatever.
Jason had one more comment.
Okay.
"As a small business owner, it's not attractive to have a business above somebody's place of residence. The shift in residential use devalues the importance of local business."
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, we don't have any new hands. Again, just Willing Biddle and Ms. Vanstein.
Okay, so no new hands. Nobody is coming back to us right at this moment. There will be other opportunities, I believe. Give me a second. I know you lost me visually. Great, so comments from the board about this, one of the issues I believe that we're addressing is the comprehensive plan, of course, but we also have to make a decision about keeping this public hearing. Do we want to close it, or if we want to keep it open? So I'll ask for a round of commentary on that as well. Deputy Mayor Casada, I believe, though, that you want to discuss the comprehensive plan. You and Trustee Lopez are the two trustees. We'd like to assign one or two trustees to every one of our initiatives, whether it's police reform, whether it's comprehensive plan, whether it's DPW site, et cetera, and so on. And so you two have been involved in this in a material way, so I look forward to hearing more from the two of you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so I just wanted, you know, I want to thank everyone that actually worked hard on the comprehensive plan itself. I think we have said that several times, from staff, consultants, to all the volunteers that actually put a lot of hours into this. That being said, just a couple points of clarification on this. I know we are, we are looking at public meeting in regards to the comp plan. But also, I want to make sure that the public is aware that we did have a DGIS resolution that was also be part of this process. And what that means is, some of the comments that are related to the comp plan actually kind of, they tie back together. One of the things that we did, and I'm sure my colleagues or some members on the staff will correct me or fill in the blanks if I'm missing something, some of the concerns and some of the things that we are talking about here that are part of the comprehensive plan that is in front of us, that is in front of the public, actually did not make it under DGIS portion of that plan. Several of those, and I think I will double-check the website, but I want to make sure that that is part of the website, so the public is also aware that some of the comments, you know, that they're, in a way, they're related. And I'm gonna just blomp some of the topics, obviously. Parking in front of your property in a T-zone, that did not make it under DGIS. Changing the zoning in a T-zone to, to have a special permit for three families, that did not make it under DGIS. The MF3 portion of that plan, that did not make it under DGIS. The overlay of adding an additional floor on the upper portion of the Crown Avenue as a part of the form plan itself, that did not make it into the plan. The setbacks on the T-zone and the S-75, the reduction of that, that is part of the DGIS. So, so again, oh, and the other one is that T-zone has a right to have a two-family and a two-family zone, that is part of what it made, it made it to the DGIS. So, and we had several meetings in regards to that, so I want the public to be aware that some of the stuff that the majority of the board at least was in favor to remove those items from the DGIS. So I want that to be clear in that regards. And so that's, that part of the comment. The other one, Mayor, you asked if we can keep this public meeting open. My suggestion will be, yes, we should keep this open for at least a couple more meetings, so we can get more feedback from the public in general, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the board?
I agree, we should keep it open. Does that include accepting comments via email? And questions? That's part of it, right? I think we need to give people at least another week to do that.
Trustee White, the thought would be, if the board agrees, the public hearing, they would make a motion to continue the public hearing for the next meeting, which would be April the 7th, and public comments would be accepted until Monday, April the 12th.
And if we decide we want to do it longer than that...
Most certainly.
Dana, we can. These are just timeframes, timelines, suggestion. There are a couple of pieces that really do have time as of the essence issues, where you do have to hit the mark once the meter starts running, once it clicks. But the staff and our council is gonna notify us in plenty of time if we start missing those. But we're nowhere near missing those, because we just started. So we're in good shape, but I appreciate it. So it'll be at least a week, and then if we want more, where people in the public say, hey, but there's a lot going on. Aside from a pandemic, we just finished another major initiative that now goes into a rollout with the police reform, DPW site. We just had at least six sessions. There's some tours. There's all sorts of stuff going on. So, you know, if members of the public say, hey, let's do this another week, because we've been focused on other things, I'm sure we'll be very flexible, so I appreciate that. But for now, we'll keep it open. At least I've got two folks so far saying, yeah, let's keep it open, and a recommendation to do so. Any other comments, though, Trustee White, about the comprehensive plan itself? I know you were involved in some of the chapters on it that you would like to add?
I appreciate the process of going through this. I'm thinking about what Austin will be like in 10 years, and what we might want to do to make it a better place in 10 years. I do have concerns about density and how that increasing multifamily housing, how that in any way helps solve some of our other issues. It seems to only add to them. So I just think it's something that we really have to talk about a little bit more. There must, unless I'm missing something. So I, I mean, it's funny, because the zoning chapter was the only one where I really had concerns. The rest of it is, I think, very worthwhile reading and brings up a lot of good issues that we have to think about moving forward. And I guess my question is, you know, what do you foresee the population of Austin, the Village of Austin, being in 10 years? Because we seem to be laying the groundwork for quite an expansion of our population. And, you know, you have to think about that, is how much we can handle. We also, you know, another issue that, that comes up in the cultural chapter is what happens with our churches that can, that whose congregations are dwindling and are having trouble. We already have an issue with one church that has been closed, the Methodist Church. You know, they just, they just, this survey shows that less than half of Americans are going to church anymore, which isn't all time.
And synagogues. I don't, I don't mean to correct, but it's actually, the churches and synagogues are down about 50%. Just wanted to throw that in there.
Okay, all right.
Very consistent.
So I, I think this is something we're gonna have to, to think about adaptive reuse of some of our holy sites. of some of our holy sites, possibly. And I think that as we still work toward possibly building downtown in those two lots that are empty as a result of urban renewal, thinking long and hard about what form those would take and also thinking long and hard about how many large apartment buildings we can handle. And the impact that those buildings can have on traffic. And I mean, a lot of it is very location-specific. Some locations can handle it better than others. So I think we have a lot to think about, and I know it's a lot to read. But I think that everybody loves Austin and they love the village. And they want it to be the best it can be. And I think that we have that attitude moving forward will be good.
Mayor, if I just had one thing, I forgot. Well, Dana was talking about housing and additional stuff. So the other thing that I forgot is accessory apartments also did not pass as a part of the DGIS. So just again, for the public, as I pointed clarification, those are items that are part of the com-plan proposal right now, but did not make it into the DGIS proposal within itself. So that was all. Thank you, Mayor.
Beat me to it, Manny. You beat me to it. I was going to kindly remind you as a point of clarity to that, what did or did not make the DGIS. But yes, a lot of work went into this. I appreciate everybody that's on here right now and your input. We obviously have a couple of discussions to be had, and I am in favor of keeping it open until we're comfortable. This is, it's a big, big plan for us. All right, this is my first one I've been involved in, and I've learned a lot. And always willing to listen to the ideas and the thoughts of our constituents. So I want to thank everybody for all their work, all their input, and I will yield my time to Trustee Lopez.
Trustee Lopez, you're on, if you want to say something.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Mayor. So I want to start by first echoing the gratitude for everyone that is here tonight, everyone that has contributed to making this project possible. It is a mammoth project. It takes over a year to put together, and it's, no matter how long we take on it, there are always new things that we can add to it. And so thank you for all the folks that have been involved in the community, the staff. Frank Fish and your team, thank you so much for all of it. I want to make a few points. Number one, I I recognize that a lot of the comments that we've discussed tonight have been with respect to zoning and housing. And these are, it's always economic development as well. In some ways, you know, these are some of the most important issues that we face as a board, because as a community, we, due to local control, that's where we have a lot of latitude. There are a lot of pieces of how our community works where we don't have direct control. You take our roads, for example. If it's a state road, we don't have control as a village. And so when someone says it's a fixed Highland Avenue, well, we have to go through the state. We can't just do that ourselves. And like that, there's a lot that we don't necessarily have direct control over, but a lot of housing and zoning we do. And so it makes sense that it gets that amount of airtime. But I want to make sure that everyone is clear and sees that there's a lot more than housing in the comprehensive plan. There's transportation and there's all about how to have sustainable infrastructure, where we talk about our environment. We talk a lot about the waterfront, very specifically in the way that climate change is going to impact it. And unlike the comprehensive plan from 10 years ago, we also have an action agenda. How are we going to implement these ideas? That's an incredible thing. And so I'd love to get community feedback with respect to those pieces as well, because they're also a part of our vision. Number two, this plan is both, I'm using the small letters here, conservative, small C conservative, and small P progressive. Okay, it's conservative in that there are elements of what makes Austin great. We want to conserve. We want to keep the downtown looking historic. And one of the things that we bemoan, both in writing and the comprehensive plan and in conversation, is the way that, and Dana White can tell us all the details, the Xs and Os, the way that urban renewal destroyed our downtown to that half of it, it no longer exists. And so we reimagine what that may look like. We want to conserve what is there. We want to conserve the ability to walk through our community. And we like the amount of space that we have and the feel that we have where it doesn't feel really congested and it doesn't feel, you know, I'm from Brooklyn. I came from the city. I know what it's like to be in a really dense place in terms of the streets packed with people. And this is not that. And I think that there's a sense of wanting to conserve the character of the community in that way. And many other elements. We have a million events and so many different kinds of cultural elements. We want to conserve those things. Those are the things that made us want to move to Austin. Those are the things that make us want to stay in Austin. Let us conserve those things. But you can't win a game only by defense. You have to play offense too. It's also about being progressive. Having a vision for what is it that we want. Sing Sing Museum is coming. What are the implications of that? What do we want it to be? Is there a way to move people from the waterfront to our downtown more easily through reimagining the transportation? What are the ways in which we can make Austin more bikeable, more walkable? Really thinking big and thinking about how we can make Austin in the next 10 years, not just how Austin is in 2021, but with a different date on the calendar, but better and different. Change is inevitable, and we want it to be the kind of change that we're going to be really excited about. And so as you're reading the comprehensive plan, certainly have your small C conservative defense glasses on, because we want to keep what it makes Austin great. But also, don't be afraid to imagine and to dream and to see what is possible. Not just for you now, but also for our little ones that are coming in, for people that are new to our community. These, all of these elements make up what makes Austin beautiful. The third and last point that I'll make is directly in response to my beloved trustee Dana White with respect to the question you asked around housing. So as I understand it, part of the issue that we faced when we were looking at the comprehensive plan is when we started, because I'm at one of the OGs, I've been on the comprehensive plan steering committee since before there was a comprehensive plan steering committee. It was me and Mary Garrett, you looking at each other like, who should be on this committee? And so we like put the thing together and we are where we are. Part of that early, early conversation was about what are, let's take a look at the last comprehensive plan and evaluate what are the elements of it that worked, that we implemented, that we can give ourselves a pat on the back? That's great. What are the elements that we didn't that we may want to include in this one? And what are the problems that are now existing that we really need to face? One of those problems has to do with housing. And we, the less charitable version of this is illegal housing. The more technical term is pre-existing non-conforming housing. But housing that we know doesn't reflect the number of people that live in it, right? What do you do about that? That's clearly a problem in the village. What do you do? We can't do nothing. That's what we're currently are. So doing nothing is not an option. We're going to get where we are. And we know it's a problem. So let's do something. So the idea is the kinds of recommendations that you see there with respect to the overlay zones and the form base in some ways. These moves are meant to address, what do you do about this really complicated problem? If it were an easy problem, we would have solved it. We would have already done that thing. And it would be done, but it's complicated because the way that our department works, you can't just have our folks go in to every single home to kind of see who's there. People have rights, right? And there's a certain amount of, there's a regulation. I'm no expert. Lord knows about any of these things. But if you have the building department do inspections, it has to be above a certain number of apartments or a certain number of doors that a place has, right? So if you have a two-family home, the building inspectors are not going in there to see how many folks live in a two-family home or in a one-family home. But my colleagues who know much more about this can give you all the details. But the point is, it's complicated. It's not easy. And so this is, this is meant to address that issue. Is it perfect? No, I'm sure it's not perfect. Policy is a blunt instrument, and there are unintended consequences, I'm sure, from any of the changes that we recommend. But it's through this process, through bringing it to the community, getting the feedback, that we very slowly kind of lurch our way to progress. And the idea is in 10 years, that we implement some of the changes that we see here, the situation will be better than it is today. That's the hope. That's the vision. I hope it's not the same. I hope it's not worse. I think if we do nothing, it'll be the worst or it'll be the same. So that is why, Trustee White, the changes are there. Are those the exact right ones? I think so, but I don't know. I'm a moron. I don't know. I'm not the one. There are some housing expertise, some zoning expertise. Look at Simon Kates, like this.
I'm not a moron, Omar.
That's very generous of you to say. It's also, it happens to be true. I don't know what I'm talking about when it comes to this. But, you know, ask the people that know what they're talking about, and they'll tell you chapter and verse. I have to really take the rationale for these various changes, and that's why they're there. So I thank you for humaning me through all of that. I recognize that it's fundamentally in some ways unfair that I speak for an unlimited amount of time. And then my beloved community members here get low but four minutes. I'd love to hear our friend from Arcadian, I give his piece. I've been learning some things. That's great. If it's not now, please communicate with us, because I would love to learn. I'm learning a lot just hearing it tonight. So I know it's unfair. It's things I didn't make the rules. I'm just kind of playing by them here. Whatever we can do, we want to hear your voice, I think, is the point of all this. If not tonight, if not in four minutes, then ultimately, because without your perspective, we can't make this happen. Thank you.
Okay. And you want to extend the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Oh, great. So I am not a person without opinion. I mean, anybody that knows me, you all know that I always have an opinion about something. But because this is a public hearing, I'm going to take the position on this one, that I'm not going to state my opinions about what should or shouldn't happen until we're done with the public hearing. I will say, however, that I do agree with Trustee White in the sense that there are a bunch of chapters here. If you look at this as a book with chapters, you are really, I think, will benefit from reading all the chapters. The zoning tends to be, as Trustee Lopez says, something that we're very much, local municipalities talk a lot about zoning, a lot about planning, because that's something that we do control on so many levels, and that is why we talk a lot about it. The environment, we think we control. The reality is, if you know anything about environmental, anything, we do not live on an island. And even if we did, we wouldn't control the environment. We do the best we can, and we look at policies that are helpful to our community. Whether you think our community is underdeveloped, rightly developed, or overdeveloped, the environment is interrelated to all of that. And so we aren't discussing as much, I think, to everyone's point with the other chapters. Because I think there's a lot of agreement with the staff, the attorney, the member committee of 63 people who sat at different subcommittees and all the other stuff that you heard about. There seems to be more of an agreement. You could argue, I think, on some chapters, I want more, I want less. It's really the zoning that seems to get into intricacies. Not so much in agreement with Trustee Lopez about the experts at the table. I did quite a bit of work on urban planning, and when it occurred to understand all the complaints that we now have about it, those were done by politicians and those days, experts. The experts of those days. And oftentimes, when you look at highways to nowhere that you find all over the United States and other countries, and all sorts of things, oftentimes, they are done hand in glove with well-intended politicians and well-intended engineers and well-intended planners and well-intended staff and well-intended everything. At the time, it probably seemed like a good idea to someone, or it wouldn't have happened. So it isn't surprising that we now find ourselves in a community that sees the result, unintended, I think, as it is, and says a little bit like, whoa, I'm not sure I want to jump right into. And I think you're right, Omar. It's a little P and a little C. Because I think that people do feel a little bit, those that grew up here feel a little bit taken back by, hey, let's think twice about things. Doesn't mean there's agreement or disagreement, just we'd like to think a little bit more. There is, I think, culturally also a change in the fact that every time something happens in New York City, specifically in Manhattan, with 3 million tourists a year and 3 million commuters a day, that what happens in the city economically and from a space, a living space point of view, reverberates in suburban area. You draw a line about one hour out of midtown to any of the suburbs, and we're all in the same boat. We get affected by the economics of the city. And now we're affected, as was said earlier, by the economics from Amazon and all the other places and the high-tech companies that are displacing the economics of small villages and towns. Not quite sure about the cities, considering the four big techs have already announced they're going to create well over 90,000 jobs in the last, in the next three years in the city, mostly in Queens and Manhattan. So I don't know what that will do to housing and everything else. But we have a lot of people who moved here from Brooklyn, who saw what happens when two families become three. Three become low-rise. Low-rise becomes high-rise. High-rise becomes skyscrapers. And now they're living in Austin because they can't afford skyscrapers. So we're taking all that in. That's what public hearings are also for, and that's what all this is for. Having said that, there's some really great ideas in this com-plan, not just in zoning, but in all the other chapters. So I'm encouraging people to participate, to let us know what they think. I'm also going to encourage the people that sat on the subcommittees. Having sat on those subcommittees doesn't mean that you're no longer part of the public. I would encourage, you can write to us if you want to participate specifically next week, if there's some commentary you want to make, something that you thought about after the fact. Really want to hear from you, because you guys did a lot of work. And it's, it's a good time to also hear from you. So I would appreciate that input as well. So I'm in favor of extending the public hearing. And I'm trying to spend the next week to two weeks to really get information and input from people. I do beg the public not to have this conversation with us on social media. Social media is a curated venue. It is not one that is helpful to us. It also is not only curated, but all the cutting and pasting doesn't allow us to see the real story and who it's from. So please speak directly with us individually, as a group, or to the staff. Very much appreciated. And we'll take this on to the next step. If there's any other comments, I think we're done for now, but please join us next week. Bring your comments with you and bring your friends with you if you want. As far as I'm concerned, I've said this over and over at every one of these public hearings, the more, the merrier. So I look forward to that. Stuart, have I left anything off before we, I think we have to do either a vote or something to extend.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor and Stuart, there are quite a few new comments in the Q and A box since the trustees began speaking. So I'm not sure if you want those to be read into the record.
Let's, we sort of closed it off. I didn't text it for the next one. Not seeing what you're saying.
Jason has a couple more comments.
About the plan or about the comments?
More comments. April wants to know, how do we participate during the coming days?
Okay, good questions. Okay, the participation, I think I answered. Email to the board. Ask questions of the board or the staff. Maddie, give me the email for the plan again, because I'm flipping through on the little iPhone here.
Yep, it's just plan, P-L-A-N, at villageofasning.org.
Right, so if you have questions, somebody questions, you read a chapter, page this and that, paragraph this and that, down to, you know, how did you do this? How did you do that? We will get back to you with an answer as quickly as we can so that you're more informed. I think that sort of covers most of that. Jason, all of this, you could put down in an email for us with your comments and recommendation. I don't, I think we're moving on to the next thing, or we can continue next week. The only one I'm concerned about is anonymous, because I'm wondering if someone is doing this anonymously because they simply don't want to let us know theirs. So I want to just read it. Okay, it's a complete, I can read this out. Dana, you want to read it out?
Which one? Okay, so anonymous.
Anonymous one. This goes in the record.
You know, anonymous is concerned with how does adding more multifamily building add to the character of our village? How do you plan for handling current overpopulation and controlling garbage schools, policing illegal housing? There's no reason to expand this. There's no reason to expand this in the T-zone. And she comments, building, that our building department is losing the battle on inspecting illegal multifamily homes. Stop hiding behind old policy and move forward. She's disgusted at how this is never, ever addressed and that adding more families does not address this.
Right. So that's actually, there are some actually parts in the comp plan that actually do address that, to be honest. And even in one of the presentations that was done to the board about this, there was a conversation about this topic. The rest of it is really something that has to be sent to the village managers on this call about how to deal with code enforcement is really the issue. And we will take that down. That's all I can say on that is that we're taking that as input. Are we ready to move to the next?
Mayor?
Item? Yep.
If I may, I just, I have one comment here. I think it should be at least read into the record and then go on, if that's not a problem.
Yeah, no, please.
The one from, I can read it Dana, Marissa Caruso. This plan should include a parallel initiative to address unsafe substandard housing.
We read this one.
You read that one?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, I'll stop.
You can read.
Yeah.
No, okay. I just didn't know I was ready. I didn't know I was ready. I must have been eating a cookie. Sorry.
No, no, it's okay. Listen, there's a lot to talk about. I do want to make it also clear that Manny had brought this up earlier in some ways, so did Omar. You know, I think sometimes in private industry, when a company does a plan, it's a plan, it's approved and everybody starts following the plan, as if it's, you know, something that is a must-do. It was presented earlier and the context of this is that in this context, some of the items on the plan are things that future boards may want to look at. There is no state law that says, there's no law that says that this board of trustees or even the next board of trustees, whoever may be on it, are obligated to follow the plan word for word. These plans are designed with ideas, with recommendations, with suggestions. Some of them may be better looked at in four, five years after some already done, because some more logically and chronologically, one might say, you know, you do step A, you go to step B and C. Some might say it gives you an opportunity over a decade to make some adjustment to changing issues, changing demographics. This was all done in the middle of pandemic. I got to tell you, there've been a couple of discussions that say, you know, a lot of things before the pandemic are going to look a lot different after the pandemic and you did this right in the middle of pandemic. Are you sure that some directions? But there is literally no end to that conversation, to trustee Lopez's point. There is no end to adding one more thing or taking one more thing off a plan. So for me, this is a lane to travel in and some of the recommendation, we may choose or feel it's not appropriate now, but you don't want to do these plans every two or three years and you also don't want to wait 40 years. So this is sort of stakes in the ground that say, this is what members of the public have brought forth based on living in this community. This is what professional staff has brought forth based on their day-to-day operation reality that they know about better than anyone else. And this is from some experts who've been to other communities and have seen some successes and some failures that they shared with us. That to me is the simple context of this. And you don't want to hire consultants every two years to reimagine. You look at 10 years, 11 years, nine years, somewhere around there. Let's put a stake in the ground for a 10-year horizon. That's probably a good number to answer a lot of the other questions. So I think this is a great plan. I may not agree with every single point and we'll talk more about that when I hear more from the public as I learn more and more about what the public thinks. So that's sort of my final comment. I obviously have already said I won't extend this, at least for another week. We'll take more in emails. And I think we're ready to move on to the next item.
Mayor, we just need a motion to adjourn the public hearing to April 7, 2021, please.
So moved.
Again. Did I hear a second? Was that you Omar?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Already done the comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you Stuart, I just couldn't hear you there.
No problem. Martha, back with you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to public comments on agenda items. Is there anybody here from the public who would like to address the board on any of the resolutions on this, on the agenda tonight? I don't think Eric Garrity said he wanted to say something about the.
I texted him. Is he not on yet?
His hand is raised.
He is here, Mr. Garrity. I will move you over.
Good evening. Eric Garrity, co-owner of Sing Sing Kilbrewery and resident of the Village of Austin. I'm speaking tonight about the proposed Local Law III. And I'm speaking on behalf of the members of the Austin Business Alliance, a collective of brick and mortar business owners in the Village of Austin. We were disheartened by the conversation at the March 24th work session in regard to the proposed cafe permit fee structure for this year's May through October season. We'd like to illustrate the realities of running a business in Austin and would like to propose a fee structure that we collectively believe is doable for businesses in downtown Austin. Although New York State is allowing us to operate at 75% capacity indoors, until the social distancing protocols are lifted, the actual capacity ranges between 30 and 40% maximum. Also, many customers are not yet comfortable sitting indoors. Outdoor seating is essential for our survival. We are far from recouping our pandemic losses and are struggling to survive. After months of deferring expenses like rent and bills, utilities and so on, we are now catching up on payments and our margins are tighter than ever. We are in between PPP loans and other sources of federal government assistance are coming due to be repaid. We appreciate the village waiving sidewalk cafe fees for last season and this season, but we believe that trying to recoup imagined parking revenue is not the way to go. Instead, we suggest that the village charge its annual outdoor cafe permit fee for each parking spot. A business that uses two spots would pay $75 times two for the season for a total of 150. One practical suggestion for the village to consider that would negate any lost parking revenue is to replace the broken parking meter heads throughout the village with the functioning parking meter heads at spots that become outdoor seating from May through October. We have been working tirelessly throughout the pandemic to keep our businesses afloat and Austin viable. We have become known and respected for the quality products and services we provide and our customers become customers of neighboring businesses. Although our brick and mortar establishments draw people to the village, Austin does not yet enjoy the level of foot traffic seen in other river towns. We encourage people to come to Austin, not only to shop, but to open businesses here. We are frequently approached by prospective business owners that show an interest in renting spaces in the village for their businesses. Please consider our proposal for changing the village's annual sidewalk cafe permit fee for each parking spot that is used for outdoor dining during this year's May through October season. We envision a sustainable future for Austin and hope that now and going forward, the trustees and mayor realize that the relationships we build with our customers reflect the same type of mutual respect and relationship we hope to build with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Is there anybody else?
We have Lori Gershkorn. Lori, hang on one second, I will move you over.
Okay. I just want to add something to that, in particular to 147 Main Street, where I rent the space, street level for Good Choice Kitchen. And that is the tax assessment that our building has undergone from previous years to 2020. When the building was purchased by Millio Management from Stag in 2019, the building was reassessed, adding 50% to our tax base. I pay a percentage of that building space. So it was assessed from, I believe, $1 million to $8 million. That is a huge increase. And I just want to note, it clarified that I may not be the only business owner that is a high taxpayer. When you're evaluating our suggestion of fees. I don't know what other businesses of the OBA have to deal with in their tax, real estate tax structure, but I wanted that noted as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm trying, I guess, I'm trying to understand that correlation to what we need to do establish. So if I understand it correctly, you had an unexpected increase because of the way your lease is designed as proportion. And I'm sure all leases are a little bit different, but in your case, and so you're just suggesting that we should also look at what small businesses pay in Austin when making this decision. I just want to make sure I understand that that's what you would like to add to this.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. I want to make sure I heard it right.
The scope of costs of doing business in Austin.
With this particular landlord though, with this particular building?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I just want to make sure I'm hearing correctly. Any other comments for the board? Okay.
We don't have any new hands still.
I'm seeing a Q and A though. Hold on a second. Is that, that's probably previous Q and As.
Yeah, these are.
Okay, that's all from before. Okay. Okay, thank you. So Stuart, what you need from us is a vote, because we are spring is here and we want to get moving on this. Are there any comments on the board regarding this particular piece of legislation we have to go through?
Mayor, we didn't actually, Martha hasn't read the resolution yet.
No.
Okay, then.
Okay.
Excuse me, but Stuart, the goal tonight though is look to a resolution and go through that, to go through the open, to the public hearing for it, correct?
No, the resolution is just calling for the public hearing.
Right, okay. Go ahead Martha.
A call for public hearing, proposed Local Law III 2021 titled, "A Local Law Amending Chapter 216 Sidewalk Cafes of the Village of Austin Code." Result of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Austin hereby calls for a public hearing to take place at 7:30 PM on April 14, 2021, or as soon thereafter, as a matter may be heard, to consider proposed Local Law III 2021 titled, "A Local Law Amending Chapter 216 Sidewalk Cafes of the Village of Austin Code." And be further resolved, as a result of a continuing state of emergency and as a result of the executive orders issued by the governor, including Executive Order 22.1 and 22.97, the public hearing will be conducted remotely via Zoom. And be further resolved, that for those individuals who want to watch and/or participate in a public hearing remotely, the following contact information is provided. Do I have a motion?
Move. Second.
Okay, is there any comments from the board on this? Let's open the public hearing.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I made my statement last week, so, but I'm in favor of moving this to a public hearing, yes.
Okay. Martha?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So just as a matter of course, Stuart, both Ms. Gershkorn and Mr. Garrity put in their public views, but they're going to be required to come back again with exactly the same commentary because we're opening for a public hearing?
No.
Or can we just take these?
We can take it. I should also point out that Mr. Garrity's comment was more about the fee, which is something that's going to be discussed next week.
Okay.
By the board, not directly with regard to the local law. Next week, there is a resolution before the board with regard to the fee for the outdoor dining. There had been some discussion by the board about that last week.
Right.
And that certainly can be changed. Either that can be changed at the time the resolution is read, we can put in, you know, whatever fee the board thinks is appropriate. But I wanted to have that fee in place, because we are beginning to get applications and then, you know, proceed, you know, with the local law. In the case of Ms. Gershkorn, one thing, I do intend to follow up with the assessor to see exactly what the situation is, because as this board knows, we don't have anything to do with the tax assessments. It is done obviously by the town tax assessor. And it would be the responsibility of the building owner to challenge that tax assessment, which may well have been done. I'm not familiar if it has been on this particular property, but that's something I will find out. But in terms of the comments that were made, they're all, they're all heard, they're on the record here, they'll be in the transcript. So the board can certainly consider them at the time of the public hearing. But again, next week, there will be a further discussion with regard to the fee, which I took as the main issue that Mr. Garrity was presenting to the board.
Yeah, so did I. I mean, you know, so there are two issues. The public hearing that we're voting on, the principle of charging in the first place, and then the tertiary piece, which is, you know, what is the, what is a fair amount? Which is really what was being addressed by the business owners. But I took that also as, the way you did. So not argument about whether charged, but that there is something, but disagreement with the amount that the board discussed a week ago.
So Stuart, if I understand this, we're going to discuss this next week at the work session, hopefully coming to a happy compromise and it'll be, so instead of wasting time during the legislative, the proposal or the resolution will be prepared according to what we discuss next week.
Well, what I've got trustee Fritsch is this, next week is a regular meeting, it's a legislative meeting, it's April 7, so it's the first Wednesday.
Right, right, right.
There is a resolution already drafted in the draft agenda for a fee to amend the fee schedule for outdoor dining. That, the fee that is in there is based upon the discussions that the board had last week at work session. That fee is obviously up to the board. You folks can change it any way you want, you can change it next week. We can just, you know, the, that resolution is not obviously written in stone. So that, but we did want to get that in place, so that when applications begin coming in, we would know what basically has to be charged. And then after that, we would deal with the actual language of Local Law III, which is again, also something we discussed last week. That would be on for public hearing on the 14th of April, with hopefully a vote on the 21st, so that can be in place in time for our May 1 commencement at outdoor dining.
I think Bob, that the staff is concerned that people who want to bring applications, there's certain caveats. And they are trying to also say, I need to know what you're going to charge to, for me to make a decision whether I want to move forward or not.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So there is, that's the timeliness that they're trying, rightfully so, in consideration of the small business owners, to move it forward as quickly as we can and to come to an agreement that is fair and equitable for everybody.
I totally understand.
Great.
And what we can do, mayor, is in terms of the agenda for next week, we can put the discussion of the fee actually on for continuing business. So the board have a discussion at that point and then if need, and then at that point, the resolution can be considered with whatever changes the board wants to put in.
Exactly. I think that's, that's the right move and I think it helps the small business owners make the decisions they need to make.
And I think also.
That's the goal.
And also to make it easier for the small business owners. We'll put the resolution in without a specific fee, because I think if folks see the fee, they're going to think that that's the resolution that's going to come before the board of, because the fee we discussed, I think, was $160. And it may be that, and this I'd leave up to the board, we don't have to, I don't have to put a fee in there, it could be a fee TBD at this point. And we can, based upon the discussion next week, we can then put that in, then Martha can read the resolution with the revised.
Right. Right, that was my point though Stuart, is that the fee is, is a hurdle for people. It is something that, that most of them are focused on. And so we should just come to the meeting, prepared for discussion about the fee as well, and that could be inserted per your suggestion.
Fine, fine. Martha, we'll make that change in the, in the agenda. Thanks.
Got it.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything else? Not seeing anything.
Mayor, I would just ask for a motion then to adjourn to executive session for matters of personnel and for matters of litigation. And the assistant manager and village manager are not needed to participate.
So moved. Second.
Any comments from the board on it? Any comments from the board on it? Can vote?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, everybody. Ladies and gentlemen, I think that's it for tonight, March thirty-first. Join us next week. Did I cut somebody off when I started? Nope, sorry. It's a, it's a little bit of a tricky with Zoom, because I usually get to see all of your faces, but today I'm only getting to see four at a time. So it's a little bit more challenging for me. Have a good night, everyone. And for the trustees, we're staying, we're going to go into the next session.